Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, December 12. Again, this is a hybrid public meeting, so members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are obviously at the Norton Public Library at 68 East Main Street. To join this meeting via the Zoom app, meeting ID is 638-929-1060. There is also a phone number to choose to dial in directly via that method as well. The meeting will also be streaming live on Norton Cable Access Channel 15, and it is able to be watched on replay through the Norton Media Center's YouTube channel afterwards. For future sessions, please feel free to email questions or comments to the board ahead of the meeting to Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, whose email address is posted on our agendas. We do ask that you please try to forward those in a manner that gives the board time to read them in advance as much as possible, so we have enough time to digest and ask questions as needed. So I'm going to just go, once I get through that, I'll get into the business of the agenda this evening. We do not have any bills or warrants or planning board business and policies or minutes to approve. The only item on our agenda this evening, which will probably take as long as a few other items might, is a continuation of a public hearing for SP 482 remand. This is listed as 21 Fairley Lane and 210 Bay Road. The owner, applicant Nexon Energy. And again, this is a remand to reconsider specific conditions 16, 19, 49, and 56 under the conditions of the decision. So that is our first and only agenda item of the evening. So we will get into that. And I'll thank both Town Council for joining us this evening, as well as Council for Nexon. There have been a number of comments that the board has received over the past several days from Abutters and others. Some of them do not necessarily relate to the conditions we are discussing at this point. So I just want to restate that we are focusing only on conditions, on the conditions listed. Condition 16, this is a condition related to a decommissioning escrow for the project. We are talking about condition 19 and 56, which relate to groundwater and private well testing tied to the project, as well as condition 49, which is related to sound. We are not discussing other conditions related to the project at this time as part of this decision. This is the scope of our remand. So one thing that I do want to do with that out of the way is I do want to just restate and go through some of the other conditions that we're not talking about, so everybody is understanding all of the other conditions that are already in place. So I'm going to share up, and again, this is available in Dropbox for anybody who wanted to look at it. I'm going to share this here. So this is the original decision from the remand. Okay, see, it's the remand decision. Now, I'm going to go through some of those conditions, which are relevant to some of the comments that we've received over the past few weeks from Abutters and others, to let everybody know that these are conditions that are part of the project. They are just not conditions that we are discussing as part of this remand. And I'll ask Town Council or Ms. Carter, Nexon's Council, if there's anything relevant to these conditions that I'm going to go through, that they would like to me speak to. But just to go through, we have standard conditions of approval related to paperwork. I'm going to ignore those. If anybody wants to know how long it takes to go through the posting process with the clerk, they're welcome to read through those. So prior to construction, we have specific hours of construction already specified. We have a condition related to hazardous waste is underspound on the site during construction. We will loop in the Fire Department and other departments. Condition 16 relates to the surety that we are discussing, but as we had discussed in our last session, the surety is not something which, the amount of the surety is not something that our Town Council has said is part of the discussion at this time. The vehicle is what is being discussed. The condition shows a cash surety, and the court has told us that we should accept other vehicles for that. So we have a condition for sound. We have conditions for geotechnical reports related to water. We have condition related to the SMART program, which is a state renewable energy program, which this program is intended to be a part of. And then prior to interconnection, and I'll go through some of these specifically, we have two lighting, we have signs. I'm not focusing on those. Again, prior to interconnection and during construction, the applicant will allow the town or designated to enter the site to observe compliance with the site plans. There are conditions related to screening all around the site. There is a condition for a berm and a security fence. I will focus here on condition 31. The applicant must provide a comprehensive emergency response plan to be approved by the Fire Department, which includes how specific emergencies will be prevented and mitigated, the battery control system, perimeters, conditions, actions, and notifications. The emergency contact, at least two people with expert knowledge of the system and are capable to respond to the site immediately to provide guidance to the Fire Department, as well as the name and contact information of the company contracted that has knowledge and capability of safely rendering safe and disposing of damaged batteries. There's also adequate access to Fire Department apparatus. All of them are listed. It all will have a fixed automatic suppression system in or for fire. So all of those, and you can see some additional conditions related to fire here as well. So we've talked about fire a lot. These are all part of the decision already. Again, I will also point out 48 here, it means to contain water runoff. Hazardous materials from fire suppression operations will be provided. So all of these conditions are already part of the decision. So we do not, so it is not that in the course of our discussion that we are ignoring them or we are glossing over them. We've already been over them, and they're already integrated into the decision. So I think that ties into most of what I was going to go through in the introduction here. And I'll pause here to see if Town Council or Ms. Carter has any additional comments they wanted to add related to what I've started off with here.
Good luck, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further comments.
Thank you. Okay. With that out of the way, I know we did get some additional, at our last hearing, we asked the applicant to provide some additional comments related to groundwater and some other conditions. So if anyone listening has any objections, I'd like them to come up and give us an update on those reports, which I know the board has, related to geotechnical data and other information. Okay. I'm not sure if you have an easel or anything, or just...
I can put it up if you'd like. It's just the same exhibit as last time showing the site plan.
Okay.
It's helpful for reference.
I think we would like to see the site plan up here. Please say so, otherwise I'm sure that, that's going, please go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. Stacy Minahan, I'm a principal with Beals &amp; Thomas. We last met with the board on the 26th, as the chair had noted, and at that hearing there were some requests for supplemental information, which has been provided. So namely, the board had asked for information on two topics. The first, in relation to noise, to contextualize Nexon's proposal to limit sound generated by the project to eight decibels at the property line, shared with 200 to 202 Bay Road, and to relate the increase against existing ambient sound levels to commonly perceived sound sources. The second item in relation to potential groundwater impacts, to describe the Massachusetts Contingency Plan reporting and assessment requirements in the event of an energy storage system fire and release of hazardous materials, and then to describe the fate and transport, or potential fate and transport of contaminants from the site to surrounding receptors, again, in the event of a fire, and then subsequent release of hazardous materials. So with regard to noise, Nexon's acoustical expert, Ascentech, and actually, I'll talk both for a minute, and environmental expert, Mabit, had prepared the requested information, which was submitted to the planning board. I can review it briefly tonight and answer questions about it. In relation to that requested supplemental information and the four conditions remanded to the planning board, the project teams prepared and submitted objective evidence as to why the project is protective of public health, safety, and welfare in compliance with the zoning act. If there's a condition that's different than what we've proposed, it would need to be supported by objective evidence that it is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare. So with regard to noise, I will start, I'll start with our information, and then I can also respond a bit to supplemental information that was submitted by the Abutters as well, if it pleases the board. So MASDEP is the state agency responsible for policing noise pollution. They've established a 10-decibel over-existing ambient threshold as an acceptable standard. So the state agency that's charged with ensuring safe noise levels has concluded that an increase of 10 decibels at the property line does not negatively impact health, safety, or public welfare. We're not disputing that towns are free to set more stringent standards, but Norton has not done that. Nexon has proposed something more stringent than the 10-decibel, decibels, at eight decibels increase over existing ambient at the property line. It's two decibels lower than the state standard. That is despite the fact that it has not been shown to be necessary for public health, safety, and welfare, but it's an eight-decibel increase at the property line that Nexon is proposing. We're suggesting that when considering what standard to set for a noise increase, that MASDEP is a good objective standard to rely on in making the board's decision. So for reference, from the Ascentech report that was submitted, with current modeling, the night ambient sound level is about 26 decibels. So the state maximum of allowing a 10-decibel increase at the property line would bring that to 36 decibels, which is similar to an indoor library or an outdoor quiet suburban nighttime. That was kind of the items that the board had asked for some reference. Again, it's very hard, as Ascentech's report noted, to translate decibels to how people perceive them, since there are a lot of factors, someone's hearing, all of that, the existing noise level that goes into it. But they did include with their report a chart that shows what different decibels can be considered as you go increasing in noise. So that's an attachment to their report. And with saying there's no evidence that anything less than what Nexon has demonstrated as attainable, again, the remand requires a measurable and attainable sound threshold, and this is given the approved configuration of the project, so as it was approved by the board and upheld by the court. There's been no objective evidence that a lesser or more stringent requirement is necessary to protect health, safety, or public welfare. I'll pause there in case there are questions, and I can also, if it pleases the board, address some of the information in the Intertech report that was submitted by Abutters, or I can move on to groundwater and the information that you cited.
So just to, I think, so just to summarize, you feel that the eight-decibel overambient that you've recommended is attainable and reasonable, and Nexon is comfortable with that being the number that we choose?
Correct.
Because I would say that I do not have a crystal ball, but I would imagine that it's not that expensive for somebody to get a decimeter and check this.
Yep.
So...
Well, and there are monitoring, you know, baseline requirements and the other conditions as well. And two things that I should have noted as part of my overview, but I will note now that your comment reminded me. So the other aspect that is important from Ascentech's, to take from Ascentech's report that was submitted, and also that was not refuted by Intertech's Abutters report, is that at residences, the decibel level is zero. So we're talking about an eight-decibel increase over ambient at the property line of 200 to 202 Bay Road. Just beyond that property line, there is a significant steep embankment that has woods at the top of it. So we're talking about an eight DBA increase at the property line. There's additional mitigating factors off-site as well.
Yes, I understand the difference, but I think we have to look at the land and the property lines. I think we can't predict the future uses of land.
Yes.
So I think the board, for the last, for the five years we've dealt with this project, we've been consistent that we want to measure the property line.
Absolutely, and I'm not suggesting otherwise. The court has held that, or the courts, there is case law that holds that a public health, safety, and welfare standard is not to be decided based on hypothetical potential future uses of a property. But I agree completely that the eight-decibel increase is at the property line.
Okay.
For that singular property, and the results of residential properties are zero.
And you mentioned that specific property line. Is there any, do you have any hesitation with extending that to other property lines related to the project?
I wouldn't think so. No, that's the closest property line to the equipment area.
I say that just purely from the, from previous discussions about this project, I understand the sound barriers, for lack of, maybe that's the correct term, that's the term I'm going to use, as a more solid version, and structurally, kind of like a backstop at a little league field with baseball. So it's directing the sound away from wherever they are. So understanding that it's eight decibels at the property line, and we're not just putting it right in one spot, and we're shooting it off at other property lines.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And impacting it. I understand they're further away, and the sound would dissipate, but from a, yeah, from the layman's point of view, that's the, the, I'm not going to call it a concern, but the discussion point I wanted to raise.
Understood. No, eight, eight decibels at any property line.
Okay. Thank you. Obviously, the, there's another, that's the geotechnical groundwater report as well that Ms. Minahan was going to go over. While we are focused on the sound, is there anything that we wanted to ask as it relates to the report that we received? Okay. And Wayne, I know you're joining us remotely. I just want to make sure that I gave the opportunity to ask questions if you have any at this point.
Well, sir.
Thank you.
All right. So with regard to groundwater, at the last hearing, the board wanted to know what happens in the battery container if there's a fire or thermal runway, and what happens if that escapes the container, again, for the purposes of answering how to appropriately condition the project to protect groundwater. So I'll start by summarizing, and I think the board is familiar, but with the containers themselves. So in the event, so the equipment area, the batteries, the batteries are stored within steel structures, containers. They're self-contained. There are, you know, thresholds that would hold materials in. There is a port that a, so, let me back up, actually. In the event of a fire, there are remote monitoring systems that would immediately notify that something is happening and shut down the system. There is also automated sprinkler systems that come on. And then additionally, once the Fire Department arrives, there is a port in the container to which the Fire Department can attach their hose to pump water directly into the container while it is still sealed. And then there are also vents, not, this does not relate to groundwater, but there are vents to vent gases as well to preclude explosion. So the system itself is designed so as there is, so as not to have a release of material. If there is a fire and there is a release of material, Mabit provided a report that summarized how the potentially contaminated water might migrate from the site, and considerations with regard to groundwater, environmental receptors, and wells. Essentially, they described, you know, how that process works, how it moves vertically and horizontally, what their estimated travel rate is. I will acknowledge there is discrepancy in the report that the Abutters submitted. That report seems to be based on not necessarily this site in terms of some of the soil assumptions that were made, but regardless, even with that Abutter consultant report, which referenced a 250-foot distance traveled versus the one foot that Mabit has explained very thoroughly in its, in their report as to how they derived that, the proposed 500-foot initial radius of testing captures both of them. So again, Nexon is proposing that first, if there's a release, it is obviously regulated under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. It is subject to immediate notification from MASDEP. Any releases are overseen by a licensed site professional in the Commonwealth, and there is testing that happens after that release, so that the extent of the release, both horizontal distance and depth, can be ascertained. Nexon is saying that regardless of all of that statutory procedure, if there is a release, they will test within, test wells, if the butter permission is provided, within 500 feet of the release of the equipment area. And if contamination is found, they will go an additional 500 feet.
And again, just to, to go back to the condition that we're addressing, the reason that we're addressing the condition for water testing is that we are narrowing this, that the judge has asked us to narrow the scope of these conditions to speak only in the event of a fire and a release from the containers.
Correct.
Nexon is requesting a narrowing of the subject area for testing based on what we had in the condition, but that is not part of what the judge has required of the board in this remand. I'm not sure if that's...
Well, the board condition, if I recall, required testing of those within 300 feet of the overall property line.
Abutters of Abutters, basically.
Right. The 300-foot of Abutters to Abutters within the property line, which is unrelated to the location of the equipment area. So that relates, that would result in testing of areas that are extremely distant and unrelated to the release of the contamination.
We hope.
Yes.
Yeah.
And again, the testing would identify, were that not the case.
Yes. I think one of the things that I took away from the, from the report, from the consultant on the geotech, was understanding the rate at which contamination might move through the groundwater. And what I took from it is that it has the potential to be a very slow process.
Yes. Well, and I think the report indicated a foot per day is relatively fast for groundwater moving. But when you're looking at the context, it would be slow in terms of actually reaching something.
Right. But, so outside of whatever testing would be required from MASDT regulatory, the question that I would have related to that would be, when would be the right time to test outside of that regulatory framework? Is it within 30 days? Is it six months? Is it 12 months? Understanding that there's 18 different factors of how things could flow through groundwater, that's the question that I think it raised to me, is if we're going to request a testing radius based on things, what is the, understanding the timeframe when that would happen, both from a, from when it might make sense.
Right.
And because this area, the homes in this area are served almost exclusively by well water, it's, carries a greater concern, because if there's contamination of the wells, then they have no water in their house, and no way to get water.
So I'll let Kate speak to that in a moment, but I would note, and I know you're asking a question outside of the MASDEP statutory requirement, however, that process is the process that lays out, you test, you figure out how far it's gone, you test some more, and that's overseen by someone who's an expert in it and overseen by MASDEP. So even without the planning board's condition, the extent of that contamination or potential contamination is going to be tracked down through the MCP process. So it's hard to answer, standing here today, how far, or what timing should, because there are so many factors, and so that will really be informed by if there is a release, and then that testing happens to establish the extent of it, like, that will inform how fast is it moving, how, you know, how far is it going? Should we test again in this many months, or next week?
Yeah. In a lot of cases, I think there would be a significant overlap. It's understanding when there isn't an overlap. What should we be looking at at this standpoint?
I'm not sure anymore.
If, if the condition that we set doesn't match up with what the site expert says, how do we establish a framework that actually makes sense?
Got it. Well, I think, my initial thought is that the board's condition is more protective, because it's requiring immediately a greater radius of testing. But I understand what you're saying with regard to timing, and I guess I don't know how to make those two relate, because the MCP, as I said, process will track down. So say that you test within 500, and there's nothing, but then the MCP process unfolds, and they track it out, and they're, oh, there is something 300 feet away, or 200, or 500, or 600. That's, it may not match what the planning board required, but it's still going to address the same concern that the planning board has.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. And I understand that the criteria that we had set in the initial condition does create a wide area that's far away from the battery storage site. At the same time, we're not, we're not in downtown Boston. We're talking, not talking about thousands of residences here, so it's, yeah. Okay. Any members of the board have any additional questions based on this geotech report? Okay. You had mentioned that Ms. Carter was looking to come up. Did you want to, I'm not sure if we covered that, or if you still wanted to come up.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you wanted to. I think there are two questions, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make the board's, you had raised two questions, Mr. Chairman, that I think are addressed in the materials that we submitted. The first relates to whether or not, I think it was a scoping question, in terms of what the board has been ordered by the court to review, and specifically whether, so for conditions 19 and 56, whether or not the court has even ordered the board to consider this distance for testing. I think the language currently is, it pulls the notification standards, Abutters to Abutters, within 300 feet of the property lines. But if you look at page three of tab five of our submittal, which is the order allowing plaintiff's motion to amend the judgment, I think the court states, "The appropriate definition for which private wells should be monitored annually for water quality impacts by Nexon is unclear, but such monitoring should only be necessary following the event of a fire in the ESS." So I think the court acknowledges and notes that the appropriate testing radius is currently unclear as drafted, which opens the door, in our opinion, for a discussion and a revisiting of those parameters here on remand.
Yes.
And again, not sort of pulling that suggestion out of whole cloth, but tying it again to the language of the judge's decision.
Yes. But at the same time, it's a different, it opens the discussion, opens the door for discussion, but it is not, for example, the same as, I'm going to miss my number in here, condition 16, where the judge has told, basically told the board, please do this.
Correct. The board gave, the court certainly gave greater discretion to the board on remand and considering and establishing the appropriate radius. But of course, that consideration has to be informed by a couple of things. One, of course, is objective evidence that demonstrates that whatever radius is shown is necessary for purposes of protecting health, safety, and public welfare, because... is necessary for purposes of protecting health, safety, and public welfare because ultimately the regulation and condition of this use is governed by the zoning act in that particular language. And then, Mr. Chairman, your second question in terms of timing and specifics of timing. So page three of MABIT's December 1st, 2023 report, tab two to our recent submission, talks about some of the timings, standards that are triggered under the MCP. So that means an immediate activation of, I don't know if that's the right word, but reporting to the site by an LSP within 24 hours of a suspected release. And then the recommendations, so, and then also within 24 hours, there is this immediate response action. So it's a report typically oral made by the LSP who's onsite, making a recommendation about that initial testing, monitoring, sampling, et cetera. And then within 21 days after that, there's a more formal report about remediation and extended testing and sampling.
And in that period, there's all sorts of immediate actions being taken by people on the ground for whatever reason they do best.
Exactly. And so one of the things, you know, Ms. Minahan really said it very nicely, is that the planning board has imposed this condition as part of its site plan review, and were remanded back to consider certain aspects, all related to protecting the potential impact that this project may have on groundwater contamination. But there are all sorts of other systems in place that operate independent of this planning board, and the MCP is really important, which is why Mr. Viteri spent some time in his report describing it, because it's a backstop for the planning board's regulation and governed and overseen by MAS DEP, which is, of course, the state agency that the Commonwealth has decided to sort of charge with exactly this situation, right? That may not be regulated by a planning board condition for projects throughout the Commonwealth. So that is a backstop. It's not to suggest that the planning board has no authority and shouldn't impose its own testing considerations, but that's operating in tandem with and in conjunction with the MCP standards, which are intended to ensure and protect against impacts to health, safety, and public welfare. So I just wanted to respond to those two specific questions.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have additional questions for Ms. Minahan here? Okay. So I think you're off the podium.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've heard the updated reports here. Are there any specific items related to these four conditions that we wanted to discuss at this point? So one thing before I go into seeing if we have additional public comments is I'll ask town council, Amy, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but I feel like we keep circling back to the language of health, safety, and welfare as it relates to the zoning act and these specific bylaws. What would you, is there a way that you would best describe that standard for the board as it relates to what does health, the health, safety, and welfare kind of level include? Because obviously, welfare is a word that has a number of different meanings and kind of common language, but what would you say that, that is, what's the standard for health, safety, and welfare as it relates to bylaws?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Amy Questle, town council. With regard to the conditions that you're contemplating, one of them has to do with noise and two of them have to do with water slash, you know, contamination. The threshold for health, safety, and welfare for noise would be the DEP regulations. DEP under 310 CMR 7 regulates noise. And so I think it would be reasonable for this board to, you know, go with the 10 decibel over ambient, and they're actually proposing eight, so you could actually impose what they are proposing. With regard to, to water contamination, the thing that's important to note is the court specifically held that the contamination, the only risk for contamination is if there is a fire at the property. And so with that, again, it appears, you know, it appears to me when we're looking at health, safety, and welfare, we can look to state regulations and we can look to what the state regulations provide as the state regulations are supposed to, you know, provide safety nets for the public. And so I don't think it's unreasonable to look to the MCP in that regard. So, and then, so that's, that's what I would, that's what I would say. I would say that with regard to health, safety, and welfare, we need to look at that through the lens of the subject matter that we're looking at, so for noise and for water contamination.
And as it relates to water contamination, thinking of it as, thinking of somebody who's a resident in this area and they're aware of an event at this site, I imagine the first thing that they're going to think of is their water quality and understanding, even if the state's expert says, yes, we found a limit of contamination, it's 50 feet in this direction, and we should be able to mitigate it with X, Y, and Z steps that don't affect X other residences or wells or anything like that. I have to imagine that there would be a little bit of hesitancy to take that at face value, even if, so understand, from the health, safety, and welfare perspective, having, is having a testing requirement outside of what the state guidelines, something that, are we going too far with that or not?
No, you're not, provided that it is, it's done as a result of a fire. What we had before was baseline and then annual testing of the wells, and the court said that that was not reasonable because the contamination, the only, the only, the only real threat of contamination comes with a fire.
Okay. So as long as we are focusing only on the conditions of a fire, if we feel that a specific testing requirement is necessary for health, safety, and welfare, and we're staying within that purview reasonably, then that should be something where we are on stable ground legally?
Yes, in my opinion, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond on that legal aspect? Or would you like me to wait until the end of public comment?
If you don't mind waiting, I think that would be helpful.
Of course.
Okay. While I put town council on the, on the microphone, there is anything I wanted to address as it relates to this, specific to town council's guidance? Otherwise, I would open it up to public comment? So if there's anybody who's here in the meeting in person or joining us remotely, I'll ask if you're joining remotely to please use the reactions function in the Zoom meeting to signal your intention to participate. Otherwise, I would ask if anybody would like to make a comment, please come up to the podium. If there's more than one, I just ask that people find a way to kind of sequence themselves orderly. And I would ask that, again, as I stated in the beginning, we're only looking at these four conditions, so we are not talking about firefighting regulations, we are not talking about other aspects of the project which are not these four conditions. So if, Mr. Harmano, I see you getting up. And I do see the hand raised virtually, and I will get to that shortly.
Thank you. Joe Cogliano, Tutupe Road. Let me just start by touching upon what was said both by Stacy Minahan and the attorneys involved. I'll start with Ms. Questle because she was the last. I don't think her statements regarding noise are in line with the intent of the board on that condition, which the judge was okay with. He just, excuse me.
Yeah.
He just, he just said in his decision that all you have to do is get a measurable and attainable standard. You can, you know, reasonably do what you want regarding that. And, you know, that's, so I'm saying that this issue of taking the MAS DEP regs, I mean, let's face it, if the judge thought a decibel was a good idea, he would have just set that in his decision. They presented the same thing in trial. That's all he had to do, but he didn't because he was saying no. And the health, safety, and welfare standard he's using, which I read throughout this whole case, is 48, section three, which is that this, these systems cannot be prohibited except for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. In fact, they can be unreasonably regulated for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So what's another one here? There was a comment made, I may have misunderstood it, regarding water testing. The court was clear that annual testing for quantity and quality, especially with the private wells, was not something that was discussed or that was necessary. That has nothing to do with baseline quantity testing, which is not in the decision at all. I included that in the material that I gave you, which specifically said exactly what the judge said. He said nothing about baseline site testing of water quantity, and I'll get into that in a minute of why that's such a big deal. Regarding, we already spoke about that, I won't go over that again. Regarding the groundwater, one of the things that came out at trial from the only battery expert that testified was that no matter what you do, no matter what mitigation tactics you use, you cannot prevent thermal runaway from occurring.
Once it started.
What do you mean, once it started?
Once it started, you can't stop it.
That's correct. But there is a high probability that it can happen. That was also in the trial that came out in evidence. Okay? So there's a high probability that an event can happen, and then thermal runaway can happen, and I don't agree with everything that the judge decided on this matter. The expert testified that there needed to be an initiating event, not an igniting event. The court has limited this to specifically fire in the ESS. Nexon's own expert testified there could be fire in the solar panels. He said he would never put them on his house, for example, for any event. There was a comment made about the structure of this container, which there have been no details provided on this system.
Point of order, please.
Yeah.
Outside of our scope.
No, no, she just spoke about it. Stacy Minahan just spoke about this topic.
It is not within the purview of the remand conditions we need to make. It's outside of the scope of our purview.
I'm addressing what Stacy Minahan said.
It is, you've been asked to keep your comments related to the conditions over which we have purview.
So, thank you, Laura.
Sorry. Thank you.
I would just ask, I understand that you were looking to tie the design of the battery storage to the potential fire release. I would ask that you get there quickly.
I'm just commenting on what she said. I'm not trying to get anything else across. This, this part of it was just my addressing some of the things that were said. The point is, is that the containers are not designed for no release. They have a venting system, or they're supposed to have a venting system that would allow gas to be released. Some of this gas is very heavy and it travels along the ground, so that wasn't accurate. There was a statement made about soil, that the expert that I employed was not familiar with the soil. He's using the same information that was used by Nexon from the USDA, and I, having been on that farm for 45 years, can tell you that the soil is sandy soil, you know, loomy at the top, sandy gravelly at the bottom, so his analysis is correct, and I know that Regarding the 500-foot captures both one foot and 250 feet, of course, that's not the case because of the potential movement of the water, the contaminants in the groundwater. So I think Mr. Viteri in the MABIT report mentioned that there'd be a 21-day process from obtaining soil data and groundwater samples. And the point my expert made was that by that time, the contaminants would already be in my, my wells, especially when you consider that it can take sometimes, five days was testified to, of putting water on these systems to stop them from burning. Now, let me, let me address a few things. So, number one, regarding the sound. Nexon is requesting an eight DVA limit on noise at the property line. The court found that the board can set any limit it wants to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public as long as it's measurable and attainable. Let me, let me ask first, did anybody have any, I should have done this, I apologize, I should have done this initially. Did anybody have any questions on the materials that I provided?
I think your materials made sense, yes. So I was, I was going to say to your earlier point about the original intent of the bylaw, of the, not the bylaw, the condition for this project. I will say that I spent many hours going back through all of those recordings again and dredged up a lot of memories of my own, by my own way. It's very clear to me that the condition that the board made in 2019 was made in the intent of zero decibels of property line. Others on the board thought that was not reasonable or attainable. At the time, the number six was thrown around, that was not, was included in the final decision. So then, and the board ended up issuing its approval based on that perceptible of the property line standard. A video clip with all of that context was also shared with the board, so they also saw it. So I don't have to explain or go through what the board member's intent was. It was pretty clear in that video, I think. I would also say that that was in 2019, which was pre-tracer lane and a whole bunch of other things that have happened. So I think that attainable was given to us as guidance, and we have to look at, I think, I think, I think we've talked about this in other discussions, that tracer lane feels is being taken in some ways as a, you can't do anything to regulate solar anywhere kind of calling card, which may not necessarily be the best approach. But at the same time, we have to be cognizant of that precedent in terms of what is a reasonable regulation of this use.
Yeah, I'm not going to speak to tracer lane in too much, too much detail, other than to say, my recollection of it is that it specifically said, we're going to view this on a case-by-case basis. And that dealt, that issue dealt with a road into a project site, and I believe that town had a very, very, very small percentage of solar.
So it was a unique case where they did everything they could to hurt themselves in the eyes of unreasonably regulating the use.
Okay. Well, let me, let's talk a little bit about that because you're talking about attainable, so let's, let me go through this. So the question is, what's attainable? And I think it's up to the applicant to prove that something is not attainable. If the board sets a standard of zero, which, you know, may or may not be hard to reach, if the batteries are moved, the battery equipment areas moved, it's actually maybe very easy to reach because the applicant had admitted that at the residence it's zero, that's about 900 foot from the, from the battery equipment area. If you go 1,000 foot in the other direction, it should be the same thing. But I think the key thing here is, one of the key things, is that in the condition itself now, the judge upheld, he just said he needed a measurable and attainable standard, it says that the... It says that the applicant may be required to mitigate the project, including but not limited to constructing noise barriers, acoustic shields, or relocating the inverters. So that means that there's a smorgasbord available here to do things to mitigate. It's just that it has to be attainable and measurable. So that's not up to me to prove. That's up to Nexon to prove they can't do it. Now...
And I have additional questions for them after you're done, on that point.
Okay. I'm glad your offer, Peter. That's great.
Oh, I have a whole... yeah.
Okay. So let me tell you a little bit, some information that I found out. So I contacted an engineering company up in New Hampshire that designs battery systems so that I could try to better understand the situation. Because part of the problem is, is that the ACCENT Tech model doesn't even work, even for eight decibels. It doesn't work. So I'm gonna explain why it doesn't work. Nexon was approved for a 24-megawatt-hour system. They're now claiming they're gonna use a 12-megawatt-hour system, okay? A 12-megawatt-hour system going through a 2-megawatt inverter takes about six hours to discharge. Now, that depends upon the efficiency of the system. There's a little bit of deviation, but you have to know what battery, which we don't know. There's nobody has said anything yet. What does that mean? That means that in the summer sun, the solar system can run later, right? Peak production, peak production on June 21st is at 3 o'clock. But the system will run until 6:00. So let's say 5:00. Let's make it 5:00. Let's pull back from what the total production is. Let's say 5:00. Well, 5:00 plus 6:00 is 11:00. That means it's already running into the evening. Why is that a big deal? It's a big deal because ACCENT Tech used a cutoff time as 8. Well, after 8, the maximum solidly you can have is 36. But their project operates at 42. They're over the limit already, just by using batteries. I asked this gentleman about voltage loss. And I'm just gonna read to you what he said to me. This is right off of the email. "I asked him, 'If you had to move the inverters and battery storage area from its current location near the solar arrays to a position 1,000 feet away near the connection point to the grid, what would the percentage of voltage loss be?'" His answer was, "Voltage loss could be managed by increasing cable size." So nothing outside the IEE limits, which is the Institute of Electronic Engineers, if designed correctly. And then I asked him, "Is there a reasonable cost-effective method to deal with such voltage loss?" "Yes. Most of the cost is the installation of labor, so one more wire size up does not kill your project." I asked him what the cost of the wire would be. He said about $3,000. Okay, so that's this man. I asked another solar developer, this man designs batteries. I asked another solar developer, and he said there might be a 1% to 2% loss in voltage, right? What's 1% to 2% of my friends? It's not a lot. Anyway. "We also have been told that only the transformers operate at night." That's not a correct statement. "The chillers operate at night if the temperature is at least 80 degrees, because you gotta keep the whole thing cool." Chillers have a noise. They're not as much as the inverters, but there is a noise. So, do we... we used to have like an easel or something here, didn't we?
Right there.
Right?
See what it is. If it's put around...
That can run?
Yeah. Let me show you this side.
I got these, and I never got to show them, so... Might as well use them, because they cost money. But just to give you an example. Okay. So here is Nexon's alternative battery location. So this is something that they developed. This is the current battery location, and these are the different options. All right, so it's not like, and I believe one of these two was probably the original connection point. I didn't look at that plane before I came here, so I can't tell you for sure, but I think it's one of these two. So, in other words, it's not like...
I'm gonna... I don't wanna get into hypotheticals about where the system should go.
Well, not true. I'm not doing that. What I'm trying to do...
I understand we're talking about sound at the property line, and I think I would be consistent with the board's previous statement of, "we're going to set the sound limit." If Nexon needs to do things to meet that limit, then their engineers can figure that out.
I'm just saying to you, I hear what you're saying. I'm not trying to prove that. I'm trying to show to you is there are alternatives here. They have to be shown that they're not attainable. That's all I'm saying. Okay? All right, let me go over the next one. The report that was done by Intertec specifically mentioned many of these things we're discussing now, that no specifics were provided by Nexon to show the 3 dBA wasn't attainable. In fact, they mentioned here that simply moving the energy storage area 45 feet would reach 3 dBA. And that doesn't take into account, can you have taller barriers? Can you do modifications to the equipment? So the equipment, they're covering, they're covering the equipment, but can you actually make the equipment itself less noisy? So the bottom line, I think, from that report was that really is up to the applicant to provide the analysis to explain how additional mitigation and these other things cannot be done to get to that 3 dBA level. Now, they recommended that the applicant provide an audio demonstration of the 8 dBA increase and the 3 dBA increase, so that the board would help the board to, you know, to understand that situation. Regarding Condition 19 and 56, I reviewed the MABIT letter. The problem is, is that that only 500-foot distance from the ESS will not help to protect the neighborhood. Now, here is one of the diagrams. This is well number two on my property. So here's your battery equipment area. Okay, and this is well number two here. If you look at the... I don't have it with me, but if you look at the MABIT diagram, they were recommending a 500-foot radius from the battery equipment area. That radius stopped here. This is the hoop house. The well is right about there. That radius came out to about here. So that radius used by MABIT for the 500 feet doesn't even include mine number two well, which was part of the trial, that the judge found would be contaminated. The judge also found that the analysis that was done on this was conservative, and that the area could actually involve a much greater area. So, the 500-foot that they're talking about doesn't make any sense.
They can ask for it. We don't have to agree with it.
I'm sorry, I'm on a... Now, the other reason why this is of concern... Hey, I thought I got to use these things. I sent you this the last time. Here is the approximate area of the batteries. Here are three town wells down below. This water flows this way. The water inspector in this town stated in an email to me that this Zone 2 could impact this Zone 1. There was testimony given in the trial about that as well.
That is the purpose of a Zone 2, yes.
This is just to show how important this issue is and what we're doing here.
Now, I would say that there are... Our charge under this remand is to look at water contamination only in the event of a fire or release from this system.
Sure.
And that the mass emergency response system would be... Yes, this is a... the risk is to... what you're showing is there. What we're focused... and all of that scope would be something that that would be governed by.
The problem with the mass DEP rules is that they are there at 500 foot, and as I just told you a minute ago...
And they'll keep testing if they keep finding positive.
Which will keep going in the... yeah, but you heard what... I mean, you read what Mr. Viteri said in his analysis, and he was talking about 21 days. If the water is moving at 250 feet, that means in two days it's in my wells. And then it's gonna be in the Brook, because I think by their numbers, they were talking about 580 feet or something, approximately. So that means in two days, it's in those wells, and then it's going downtown, downtown to those three wells. So let me just review a little bit about this Brown Colwell letter to make sure that that's been brought forward. So contaminant... this is from the 1211 Brown Colwell letter. "Contaminated water will pass through the soil easily and quickly to the water table below, where it could migrate to neighborhood properties, Mulberry Meadow Brook and Town Wells to the south. Contaminants in the discharge would go to the water table at concentrations similar to those present at the point of discharge with the fire in the ES, which is what Tim was talking about. Groundwater flow velocity in the vicinity of the ES will considerably range from 25 feet per day to 250 feet per day." Meaning, actually, here's the statement right here. "Meaning, the Cogliano wells would have already been impacted by contaminants in the 21 days that the MABIT flames would be needed to sample the groundwater data."
And I will say that I took the MABIT report of 21 days as a... this is a guideline of how long testing can take. Not a, "it will always take 21 days," or "we're gonna sit there for three weeks." I would take it at... Maybe I'm putting too much trust in the state government, but if there's a big problem, then somebody's pressing the gas pedal on this.
What Mr. Rindazo from Brown Colwell recommended were Sentinel wells on the project site. He felt that what would make sense would be to put Sentinel wells around the ESS. Well, I don't know how far away from them. Around the ESS as kind of monitors, instead of analyzing all these properties. So the properties originally were the Sentinel wells, so to speak, all the abutters. And so what his concept is, and I think it's actually pretty common, the Sentinel wells, is to put them around the ESS, and then if the contamination spreads, then you test the most likely to be implicated abutters, which he listed, as he felt they were 193 Bay Road to 222 Bay Road and 5 Fairleigh Lane to 19 Fairleigh Lane, with sampling of the surface water in Mulberry Meadow Brook. He says here, "The assessment distance to 500 feet..." This is a quote. "The assessment's distance to 500 feet under the mass DEP is insufficient to provide public..." "...protection to the public based on potential velocities of groundwater." So that's his quote. It's in that report. He also stated that a baseline assessment of water quantity should still be required for the project site, not private wells, to determine whether sufficient quantities of water is available to extinguish fire at the ESS. My own position on the Sentinel wells is, it sounds like a better method than what MABIT is proposing. And it sounds like potentially a better method than the original one, which was, you know, maybe 100 and something properties. My concern with it is, I think for low-level impacts, it makes sense. In a thermal runaway situation, where you might have water for five days on this thing, fire and explosion, and all kinds of hazards, I don't think it's gonna matter. That's gonna turn the whole site into a hazardous waste site, because you only need like five pounds of hydrofluoric acid and 10 to 15 pounds of lithium, and you've got a hazardous waste site. That's it. So I think that there's a use for them that might actually benefit Nexon, because it's probably a less expensive way to deal with it than what was originally proposed. And I think that... I mean, I don't think they can fully protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public because of this potential for thermal runaway, but I do think that in a low-level impact, they might be a good way to approach this. All right, so let me just finish up by saying one thing.
May I ask a question in regards to the Sentinel wells?
Yeah.
How close to the ESS are the proposed Sentinel wells?
That I don't know. That would have to be something we'd have to find out. Because now that you brought this up, it's a great idea.
Here's my concern, is if they're anywhere within the proximity of the ESS, and we have a thermal runaway, nobody's going to be able to get access to them to test those wells for days.
Well...
And that eliminates... that makes the issue move at that point.
Well, two things. One, you can't put...
And we're dumping that much water on it. We're flooding everything. So I understand it. I get it.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure it actually accomplishes what you'd be looking to do.
I don't think anything is gonna accomplish the results of a thermal runaway. I think that's just a catastrophe.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think you're right. You can't put these in cranberry box. You can't put them in the floodway. So I'm not really sure. I didn't get that far in the discussion as exactly how far away they'd have to be, but it certainly...
I assume they'd have to be close, though. You want something closer than 500 feet.
I think, my recollection is, I think that's correct. I think that's correct. But certainly, it's better than waiting until it hits the property, somebody's property. It's certainly better to have them closer to the ESS. But I think there'd have to be discussion on where they would be. That's probably a licensed site professional would determine that. It just seems, as I said, it seems like a reasonable way to, you know, provide some level of protection, at least on the lower incident end of the scale, reduce Nexon's cost. The most potentially contaminated properties along Bay Road and Fairleigh Lane would be the ones that would be monitored if there's a fire, only if there's a fire. So, I mean, I think it has... I think it's something that should be considered.
What is your definition of a low-level? I'm sort of of the opinion if a fire starts, there's no real suppression of it in a timely manner.
There's not, but this goes to the fact that the judge's decision...
So, no, just answer the question in terms of what do you consider a low-level contamination of that thing?
To me, a low-level contamination of that is gonna stay right around the battery storage area. It's not gonna migrate.
No. What event causes a low-level contamination, in your opinion?
I'm not sure if we can answer that.
Yeah, I don't know, but I can...
Right.
I can just tell you, I can just tell you that there... It's not... again, this has been limited to just fire, but that's not all that's going on here. It's these initiating events. A chemical reaction doesn't necessarily have to have a fire, but you're having a chemical reaction that can cause gas, and you can cause an explosion, but it's not necessarily on fire. So we're limited to what the judge has placed on this.
Right, and so we're limited to fire only?
We're limited to a fire in the ESS and...
Only.
Which, we are limited to a fire in this ESS as it relates to this remand decision?
Yeah.
The emergency response plan that Nexon would develop at the fire department is not limited to that in any way.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to show that at the beginning, is that...
Go ahead.
This is not the only thing that kicks in in the event of a fire.
I'm in favor of earlier detection.
That is, yes.
But...
Apparently...
Yeah.
Yeah. Proximity of a Sentinel well is going to be limited by the event itself.
Yes.
If it goes in a thermal runaway, I don't think any of this matters. But maybe, you know, there's so many cells involved in these things, it's possible that there could be a smaller incident that doesn't, you know, that isn't thermal runaway that could happen. You know, it's possible... It's possible, I mean, this, again, you know...
We don't need to... I don't think we need to speculate on what could go wrong inside a battery.
Anyway, apparently, these systems are used for contaminated sites and for potentially contaminated sites. So it seemed to me as a possible issue, as long as we understand some of the problems with it, and maybe some of the limitations with it. So I wanted to just mention one more thing. I mean, I guess I need a little clarity. It sounded like the last time we were together that beyond the water quantity issues involving private wells, that there was not gonna be any quantity water testing at the project site? Is that... am I misunderstanding that? In other words, I raised the issue of water quantity... And, and in other words, I raised the issue of water quantity and my understanding, and I mean, it's right here in the, the decision, Nexon correctly contends that annual water quantity and quality testing requirements in condition 19 and 56 exceed the scope of what should be required under the findings in the decision. We're not talking about annual. We're talking about baseline project site water testing. Now, that was removed from Nexon's proposal this time. But in their letter back in September, that wasn't in there. They, they were removing the private well quantity testing. So there's nothing in the court decision that removed the requirement for Nexon to determine baseline water quantity at the products, project, project site under condition 19. The amended decision was focused on annual water quantity and quality testing, not baseline testing. So my question is, is why does Nexon want baseline quality of water at the project site removed from the condition? And I think that that's because condition 19 is a pre-construction condition. Whereas the one that they point to is condition 43. That's a pre-interconnection condition. So it's more important to make sure that we have adequate protection before construction. Because in this condition 19, it says if you can't meet these baselines with this project, you're not going to be able to go forward to construction. So why is that important? Well, determining the baseline water quantity available on the project site is the first step to determining if this project can be mitigated at the proposed location. How much water is available on site for the fire application? We have to know that. In a drought, you have to know that at the worst time. There are no fire hydrants. That came out in trial, in the area, within a half a mile at least.
And there's additional conditions that say the fire department needs to adequately supply water to address that.
That's condition 48, I think.
It's in there.
Yeah, that's right.
We don't need to-
Well, no, 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 but this involves this condition. I'm trying to explain to you why that's so important to. So then the second, that first question then leads to the second question. How much water is needed for a fire in the ESS? And then that leads to, if the report determines that the baseline quality is impacted by the use, then the project can't proceed to construction. And I believe that's why Nexon wants to remove that. Because prior to connection, the horse is out of the barn. It doesn't matter. And what's going to happen? Is the town going to make them take down the project? If it can't be properly mitigated, it's already built. So in my opinion, from Nexon's standpoint, they want to deal with mitigation after the fact. Now, how do I know that? Well, apart, what's happening here is if you look at the conditions 31, 31 forward that involve this, this issue, you see that the hazard mitigation analysis, which involves water availability and all this stuff, that's being done prior to interconnection. But a proper hazard mitigation analysis is supposed to be done before you approve the project. Because that includes the risk of location at the project at the site. None of that was done. And I'm not, I know Tim was involved, but I'm not blaming the, the board at that time because there was no peer review. And there's no language in the bylaw regarding batteries that would have required these things. That's the problem we're dealing with now.
I would actually say that Nexon would want to find issues earlier. What they don't want is to install an entire system with all the labor and then not be able to hook it up anywhere. Because then they're spending money and not getting anything and then having to take everything away. So I think that's why we made that prior to interconnection contingent on a number of items in that decision. Because that is the quote-unquote hammer of, you can't turn it on until all these conditions are met.
And they should want to do the hazard mitigation analysis tomorrow to find out if they should even go forward with this.
That would be something that they could address, yes.
I'm just saying, what do you, you know, if they build the project and then we find out that, you know, one of the things that came out of the trial with these, these same types of conditions that we're talking about is you can do, take every one of these mitigation tactics and put them all together and you can have a system that fails.
Yep.
So, so what are we going to do when the project's built and we find out it can't be mitigated? What do we do then?
Then I guess they put it back on a truck and take them away. All right, um, that's one. Or they sit there and it gets into the data reduction business.
Oh. One final thing. I heard your earlier statement about, uh, I think it's condition 19, the surety.
Yes.
I just want to state for the record, I, I don't agree with, uh, the town council's interpretation of that. I think that unless the judge specifically says you can't do something on remand, you can. You're the board. And if the door's been opened, now, if we were talking about condition 38, no, because he didn't reman, remand condition 38. But once the door's open, it's up to the board to do what's in the best interest of the town. And I think if you're being asked to change the form of the surety, that might affect the size of the, of the amount.
I-
As I'm just saying, I just want to state-
I don't disagree with it in theory.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions to speak to that in the group.
Okay.
I think regardless of that, if we are left with this situation where the number is the number, that I would be recommending that the town and town manager and the select board review some of the evidence that they have regarding potential surety amounts and see if it makes sense to potentially earmark some of the pilot revenue or something from this site toward additional, additional bond to make sure we don't end up with a problem. And they can review that and address that in their own jurisdiction.
I mean, I think theoretically, that's a good idea, but the problem is, we're here talking about this stuff before the horse runs on the road. Why don't we deal with it? Somebody made a mistake. Somebody made a mistake, and you know, someone, right? Let's be nice about it. It was a mistake, man. It wasn't intentional. But that's a $2 million, well, a $1.5 million mistake.
Yes.
All right, one final thing is a question actually for, for Nexon. And this came up in their letter, so it's, it's fine to ask. I'd like to know, and perhaps somebody from the board could ask them, what specific features will contain runner, water runoff during, during a fire event? What specific features of this project are going to contain water runoff during, during a fire event? Removal of water and soil when tens, or literally hundreds of thousands of gallons of water are going to be entering porous soil and groundwater? But I'm really interested in knowing because I, I don't know how that's going to-
It is, yeah, it's part of those initial conditions that I went through, yes. So they need to be.
I know, but I don't, I want him to answer the questions now, a year from now.
Understood.
All right. Tim, Tim, you're okay.
Well, I do my best.
I love you like a brother.
Let's not go that far.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cogliano.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've got to get my other things.
I apologize for keeping you waiting. I do see somebody with their hand raised in the Zoom meeting. The name on the screen says Ellen Anderson. So I'm not sure if that's who you are, but if you could just introduce yourself for the record, uh, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, this is Ellen Anderson of Nine Fuller Drive. I am a direct abutter to this, um, site, um, which, uh, we'll see what happens. But I have a question in regards to the health, safety and public welfare of residents, which should be of, of the highest concern to everyone, including this, um, company, um, called Nexon. But more specifically to the planning board, which is part of the town of Denver. My question is, so what is the planning board's plan? To protect residents from inhaling airborne contaminants upon, in the event of a fire or when the fire does occur over, I believe the project is planned to be there for 30 years. What, what is, um, the town going to do to protect us from inhaling airborne contaminants that will move through the air? Immediately? Thank you. That's my questions.
Sure, thank you. I'll, I'll say, that's not something that, a part of the condition that we're looking at with this remand, but I would also say that in the, in the, if there was any kind of event at the site, the town would rely on the emergency management professionals in place to set the immediate step, next steps, whatever those might be. Whether those would, whether they would request evacuations or not, those are not hypotheticals that I can speak to knowledgeably. And any subsequent steps after that?
I'm, I'm sorry, what's that?
And any subsequent steps after that?
Okay, so, but in the meantime, we would be inhaling airborne contaminants moving through the air. And so we would have to wait.
I would trust that, I would trust the fire department and other emergency management officials to do what they're trained to do and give everyone the best advice possible at that time. That's all I can say. I hate, I don't think there's a, I don't know if I have a better answer for you. I wish I did, but I don't think I do.
So perhaps providing gas masks or some respirators ahead of time would be maybe a good preventative, preventative measure?
I'm not sure if that's something that I would necessarily say, but again, that's not part of, it's not something that we're reviewing as part of this, um, this action. So to, just to, I'll go back. So this is a site which received approval with a number of conditions. The applicant has appealed a number of those conditions. And those conditions are only the things that we are able to review at this time. The project at the time was moving forward as an as-of-rank use. So the board did not have the ability to say, to discretionary, to have discretionary power to say no. And that is why we are here.
Okay, I, yes, I do understand that things were, the deal was done ahead, so thank you. Um, thank you, Andrew.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Anderson, if you don't mind lowering your virtual hand there in the meeting just to make sure that, we don't think you have any additional comments, and if you do, you can feel free to raise it right back up again.
If you could, if you could tell me how to lower my hand, I've, I've tried to do that already.
Uh, which should be the same reactions function that you used before, possibly under the more three dots in the Zoom meeting there. There we go. Perfect. You're a Zoom master. Thank you. Okay. Yes, please.
I'm Erin Johnson, 208 Bay Road. Um, one of the things that I mentioned probably a couple of years ago that, um, I think we've kind of, it's gone to the wayside, is the question of noise from these panels themselves. Because they are tracking panels, they will move with the sun every 10 minutes and there's, remind me how many panels, 20?
A lot.
There's a lot of panels. Um, I'm one of the direct abutters. I will see these panels. I will hear the sounds. So if you're saying there should be X amounts of DBAs at the property line, how is that going, you know, how are you going to measure that with those panels that are going to constantly move in? So that would be my question.
My view would be, it doesn't matter what's making the noise, it can exceed the limit.
Okay.
At any property line.
Okay. And though that noise will be measured or, because it hasn't, we have asked Nexon to quantify how, you know, how will it be measured? How, how much will that output, that will be addressed?
Yes. So the original decision mandated testing at a couple of different points. One of those is, what is the sound level now? Because all of the regulations deal with increases over the ambient noise. So what is the noise level now? And then that sets the limit for what it could be post-construction. So you need to have the before, you need to have the, a plan to show that we're going to put these machines here with these kind of sound buffers or whatever they are. And the engineers look at that and say, yes, you should be below the level. And then on the site, when things are actually constructed, you do imagine that, yes, everything was done correctly and the sound is still maybe the levels that have been set. Thank you.
Joel Johnson, 208 Bay Road. Um, in terms of condition 49 noise, one thing that I think is important that you guys understand, and Tim, you were obviously understand this, it's not just the decimal level, it's the tone of the noise, right? And I think some of you guys that weren't here originally, there was someone that testified in several hearings that their child can't even play in their yard because the tone is just deafening for her. So anybody with comments says, I don't care if we say this is six decimals, eight decimals, like if that low-tone noise is in my yard and I'm hearing it, it, it's just, it will drive you insane. So that is, you can't look at me with a straight face and say that's not going to affect your health, welfare and wellbeing hearing this eh for 24 hours a day, as Joe said. It's just, it's just, it's, it's not something we should put in our neighborhoods. I think the town is very clear when we voted, I think it was 99% of the town residents voted, this is not allowed in this property anymore. And I think this board, it's your job to kind of adhere to what the townspeople are saying. We, this shouldn't be allowed and this is what we're going to do to not allow it. The great thing about this country is you, you don't have to listen to the judges, you don't have to listen to the town council. It's the people that govern the country. So think about that when you make this decision of what you set the standard for. I say, keep it at zero. That's what you guys originally intended. We don't want to hear it. Thank you, guys.
And just for the board's edification, I think what, um, the general was referring to was, is a reference, and I believe the conditions to pure tone noise. That's also something that is part of the state's noise regulations and bylaws. The, the, uh, the layperson's version is that if you look at the sound, it should be distributed in a way across, I'm going to use a musical scale as a reference. So you have A, B, C, D, E, F, G instead of A, B, C, D, E, F, G. So that's a very oversimplification, but that's the expectation that you don't have a lot of high-frequency noise or low-frequency noise or something that qualifies under the state's pure tone guidelines.
Mr. Chair, so based on some of the audio that we had in the meeting in September and based on the state law from the DEP with regards to not only the decimal level, but the pure tone, would it, is it your understanding then that the resident could seek relief from the state under this law through the DEP?
The Clapp Street resident, you mean?
Uh, whoever played the tone-
Two different residents.
Yeah, I don't remember who actually-
The resident that he was referring to, I believe is related to the Clapp Street project. The sound that was played was from, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, is from additional, a, a separate site that's in relative close proximity to this one.
I'm just trying to offer a suggestion that they might be able to find relief with the state.
I think, yeah, we're talking about two different situations, but the, there is no sound buffering around the other site that was played as a reference.
Right.
Uh, so it is challenging to make an apples-to-apples comparison about, well, this site sounds like this, so this site will sound like Y.
So because there was no condition on the-
Plain Street, the other one, yeah.
But they still can't receive, they can't?
If, I can't speak to those hypotheticals, no. But in general, I would say that if there is a property that is not conforming to mass DEP laws, then DEP should be the party that they are, that is informed, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Wiggins, I see your virtual hand raised. Did you want to make a comment?
Hey, everybody, I'm Peter J. Wiggins, 157 Miss Florida Trail 43 on Remand Norton and a former resident on Bay Road in Norton and I walked around the cranberry bogs when I was a little boy and was peaceful and now they got soul panels and something could happen and a disaster is about to wait to happen, so it is time that the emergency needs to do something about that.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Okay. I'll turn around and see if there's anybody else here in the room that'd like to come up and speak. Not seeing a rush to the podium here. So, um, I know I was going to ask the applicant a couple of questions or anything else anybody wants to raise before I do that. Ms. Carter, I'm not sure if you or Ms. Minahan wants to come up first, but just in terms of, I think this will may go back and forth with engineering and conditions, so I apologize.
Sure, sure. I'll stand here, Mr. Chairman, just a minute.
So relating to the surety, I think we've discussed this and it is our town council's opinion- opinion that the vehicle of the surety is what we are focused on. But I just wanted, this is a condition question, so. In the conditions, again, this has had the original decision and then the remand. There is a condition that speaks to the surety being evaluated every few years, and I apologize that I don't have the number in front of me, and evaluated. So are we wasting our breath in talking about it at this point?
We would agree with town council that the only thing that's been remanded relates to the, the instrument by which, the vehicle by which the 600, I'm forgetting the exact amount, the 400,000-plus surety will be provided to the town, whether it's currently, currently as proposed cash deposit, Nexon has proposed a bond similar to the landscaping bond. In terms of review, if that's codified in a different condition, that is not subject to review, it's been upheld by the board, it's not subject to challenge or reconsideration after this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So before we move on from surety, does any members of the board have any additional questions or comments related to surety and/or my additional suggestion that it might be worth something to raise with the town manager and the select board for their evaluation?
I guess my only question would be, what's our goal here right now, tonight, in the next, whatever? Are we going to go through, start right now with that condition, go through, get a verbal agreement on it all, and we put it in writing and agree to it at a further meeting? Is that what we're shooting towards?
My expectation, I think, is that we can try and understand where we're going with everything, and then finalize the wording, potentially at a later date if we feel we need to.
That's what I said.
Apologize for saying it again, but I did organize my thoughts, as I said. Okay. So anything else related to the surety condition? Okay. So for water testing, again, we're only looking at water testing requirements in the event of a fire, release. The experts on groundwater are providing evidence that releases wouldn't get into the groundwater for a period of time, so it's not dropping food coloring in a bucket that immediately turns everything red, takes time to work through the soil, things like that. The rate of that is based on geotechnical data, but there's always variables, variables upon variables. So does anybody have? I don't want to dominate the conversation and the thought process here, pollute the waters, I'm not intended with my own feelings here. So does anybody have additional things that they feel they would want to share related to this point? So my feeling would be, because we're looking at a long-term potential, this is going to take a while to show up anywhere. And all of this could be overruled by an emergency professional on site based on DEP stuff. So my feeling is that for health, safety, welfare, everybody, I don't see a need to shrink the area, especially because everybody's on well water. And it wasn't something that the judge said was unreasonable necessarily. If Nexon wants to feel that it might be, Ms. Carter, you may feel differently. I'm not sure if, does anybody have feelings about saying, testing within 30 days of a release event, and then additionally at six and 12 months? Is that reasonable? Is that?
I think the most stringent requirement we can put on.
I would say as, as soon as safety permits.
This may have been at their wells, so in theory, but yes, that's safely permitted. Obviously, all of this, the applicant would need the resident's permission to do so.
So my understanding would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, testing would start at the closest well to the site of contamination.
Emergency management, yeah.
Yeah. And then go up from there. So if they've?
They would, I think it would start at the project site.
Yeah.
And then go up from there, I believe this would be the, that's what's laid out in the letter from the consultant.
So we're coming from well testing, those specifically?
We're talking about water quality testing, yes, which speaks to wells. But since the area is pretty much exclusively well water.
Okay.
And with this case, they talk about it could be five days of water, fighting with this, they should be testing at a distance, they shouldn't be waiting until the event is over, correct? Like they should be testing from a distance, because what we heard from the abutter was, if they're waiting for the five days to put this out, and he's within that 250 feet, his, it could have traveled that far already, so if they haven't started testing, they should be testing further out.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that if there is an event at this site, that people aren't sitting twiddling their thumbs, waiting for something to finally, I think that they're...
But starting further out as opposed to waiting.
I assume that they're going to get on site, look at what's going on, do an immediate triage plan, and then get all of those balls rolling, and then they're going to start saying, okay, we're going to test here, we're going to test here, we're going to test here, and then we're going to see what it looks like.
Yeah, when they do that, that's just not a once testing, they're doing what Joe was saying, they put in a well. Continually, yeah. They put in a well, they monitor that well, they keep testing it, and they'll put in those monitoring wells as far as the LSP thinks he needs to.
Chair, may I add?
Yes.
I don't want to, I just wanted to note, since it was referenced, the 250-foot distance, and Mr. Cogliano noted that we're all using the same soils data, which we are, the report that was submitted by the plaintiffs, though, references, I forget the term now, but essentially non-porous soils. So in non-porous, like clay-type soils, it can travel 250 feet, and so that was my reference, too. That's not the soils that are how this is set. That's, I think, why there's a discrepancy.
Yeah. Tim, I've got to come on to that. I hear you, Joe, I understand. Yes. So we have soil testing, and we have evaluations of how fast the water will travel. Both tests create different timelines and immediacies for testing. A faster rate of travel means we need to, would, in theory, tell the board, we need to have plans in place to deal with things quickly, and to prepare for that potential. A slower one means that we need to, that the timeline of potential testing is stretched out potentially. If, if, understanding that there would, that the soils would, as the consultant said, potentially clean the groundwater, and the contaminants would potentially be removed as it is recharged. But the, if the movement is slow, then so is all of the recharging and everything else. So understanding the, when is it over, is not as definite as if it's a faster spread.
Mr. Chairman, can I just try and answer that question? The two rates of velocity for the flow of groundwater have nothing to do with the timing of testing. The timing of testing that we've proposed is immediate. There's an LSP that reports to the site within 24, immediately upon the report, and has to prepare an IAR within 24 hours of the emergency. An IAR necessarily includes testing. So regardless of whether or not this LSP agrees with our experts' rate of velocity for the flow of groundwater, or Mr. Cogliano's experts' rate of velocity, they're testing immediately. So the flow of velocity, the flow information, the rate of velocity, has nothing to do with the immediacy of the response. We are proposing an immediate response. The information that we provided was to contextualize and provide, again, objective evidence about what is necessary to protect health, safety, and welfare. We're not suggesting that the timing and the immediacy of the response changes based on what we believe is a slower rate of velocity and movement of the contaminants through both the overburden of the soil as it moves down, and then horizontally through the bedrock. But what we're suggesting is, that was related more to the radius. And, and may I just respond to your, your, your sort of thinking out loud in terms of not changing or not altering the radius? Again, the finding of the court was that the risk to groundwater was precipitated by a fire in the ESS. The ESS is located at the northeast corner of the project site. This project is 23.3 acres, abutters to abutters within 300 feet, includes all sides of this property, it sweeps in over 200 properties, which is far beyond the scope of the testing that even Mr. Cogliano's expert recommended. So we do not believe that such a proposal is based on objective evidence that's reasonably necessary to protect health, safety, and welfare, because the court has made a finding based on evidence presented at trial, that the sole risk of contamination to groundwater is presented by a fire in the ESS. So there has to be a nexus to the location of the ESS for purposes of testing. It cannot be simply the existence of this project site, again, most of which does not have any components of any portion of this project. Most of it's just undeveloped bog and land that there should be testing. And the other thing to remember is that these relate to conditions 19 and 56, so the radius for testing relates to both baseline water quality testing for abutters who allow us onto the property to perform that testing. So testing even before, so that we have baseline information that can then be compared in the event of monitoring that's needed as a result of fire in the ESS, and post-emergency testing as well. So it becomes a far more onerous, burdensome, and unreasonable radius, given that context.
I understand your position on that point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tim, yeah, could we start talking about, kind of like, Kate was knowing that, the radius around the well, that would minimally extend to our wells, towns' wells?
That would be far.
What?
That would be far to get to the town wells.
I believe that's two miles, sir.
Two, what kind of problem then?
Well, I believe that Mr. Randazzo, again, has suggested testing, providing baseline testing for the surface waters of Mulberry Meadow Brook, both upstream and downstream from the project site. So baseline testing that then would be compared to post-event testing. Again, the thought being that water that's downstream from the project site would be indicative, and if there was a presence of any contaminants, testing would need to continue under the LSP and MCP process, LSP and MCP process. So I think that Nexon would be amenable to adopting that proposal, but a radius that extends to two miles is not something that we believe is reasonable or consistent with the zoning act.
Can you just restate the guidance that you're suggesting that Mr. Randazzo had set?
Sure, I believe it is baseline water quality testing that includes not simply water quality testing of the butter wells who allow Nexon access, but also surface waters of the Mulberry Meadow Brook, both upstream and downstream from the project site. And so if there's baseline testing, then it would necessarily follow that there should be comparative testing in the event of a fire for those same locations. Upstream and downstream is fairly vague, I don't think that that's been defined further, and so certainly the board could impose, but it was testing from the, I think it was surface waters of, and I can pull it up, but I believe it was surface waters, I'm talking off, let's see, it's on page... It's on page four, the first bullet point of Mr. Randazzo's December 11 report. In addition, initial assessment should include a sampling of surface water in Mulberry Meadow Brook, upstream and downstream of the project site.
Back to what I was saying, though. We need to establish a new radius around the well and not around the project, is what we're looking to do.
Around the ESS.
Yes.
That, that is the...
That's what our goal is to accomplish right now.
Yes. I talked about intent earlier. I believe that this is also a question that the board struggled with in the past, in terms of how do you define who would be impacted? I don't think we had this level of geotechnical data available at the time. So our perspective was, all of the resident, all of the abutters at this site are on well water. We are operating assumption that if there's an issue, all well water is potentially contaminated, so we want all of them included in this climbing. So, whether that is something that we revisit at this point, that's, I think, what we're talking about. So any additional points related to conditions 19 and 56 at this point? Ms. Anderson said, I do see your virtual hand raised there, I'll get to that, get you in just a second. Okay. The last condition that we're looking at again speaks to sound. So the charge in the remand is that the condition that was set of no perceptible noise was not measurable. Again, this is a, this is a site plan review at its core, it's not a special permit. So we can impose conditions, but we can't impose conditions that are unreasonable or make the project impossible. We also can't restrict solar, we have what is necessary for health, safety, and welfare of abutters. So with that said, the language speaks to just the measurability aspect, and the reasonability aspect of that is really what is in question here. I said, I sent around the original clip of the boardroom was talking about it, and the intent of the original condition was zero at the property, or no perceptible, so maybe not zero, but in that direction. Rather than the state guideline tech, which we had. The applicant is saying that they would agree to eight, which is below the state guideline. If I had to guess, again, I'm not a force teller, I'm going to guess that they would probably appeal anything below that, saying that it may be unreasonable based on the evidence that we can provide. And that's, to a point, what Mr. Cogliano said about mitigation and understanding the burden of Nexon to meet that. I'm not sure I can speak to all of the mitigation measures that they have in place, or everything that might exist in the world, and how they get to whatever reset is for their engineering team to do. Kind of, can they just do more of it is always the question of, okay, well, we can do the sound mitigation, can we just do another layer of it? That's a question of, I assume there's a point of diminishing returns where they can't meet that. And that's where I think we get into the gray area of what we're looking to do here. So they've said that they can meet eight, and they would agree to, potentially agree to eight. In terms of having a reasonable and measurable level, not to throw numbers at the board. And Ms. Carter, I'll ask, this is a hypothetical question to you, and you can answer this however you feel is appropriate. How would you respond to the, to a hypothetical question of, one party says eight, the other party says three, a reasonable person would say, why can't we meet in the middle at five or six? And how would you answer that?
So, Mr. Chairman, the judge's decision didn't just say measurable, it said measurable and attainable, and it's attainable based on the layout of this project. This project that's reflected in the site plan that this board approved back in October 2019, that was then appealed by the plaintiffs in an effort to... 2019 that was then appealed by the plaintiffs in an effort to annul the decision entirely, and it was ultimately upheld. So that site plan and the reflective layout of the equipment, the location of the solar panels, the location of the battery equipment, that has all been approved. And that project, based on the modeling, Excentec explained this, Excentec did additional modeling of alternative configurations for a sound barrier, cantilevering it over, increasing it, putting on it all sides. It is not attainable for something beyond, below eight DBA above existing ambient at the property line. And again, that exponentially increases as you move beyond, further back from the property line, which is significant, right? Because it's eight DBA simply at the, at the property line, and then Excentec's modeling shows how quickly it decreases as you move minimal number of feet from that property line. So what we would say is that anything less than eight DBA is first of all, not attainable, and more importantly, based on the objective evidence that we've provided, is not reasonably necessary to protect health, safety, or welfare, particularly given the location and the geography, topography of this property.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant to this point?
No additional questions. Comment?
Please.
Okay.
I'm tired of dominating the room.
If the, if the only thing that we have any possible teeth on here is the level of the sound, we should push that as much as possible. That's, that's my, my opinion. I think the original ten, like you said, is zero, whether, I'm not an engineer, I don't know whether that's attainable.
I assume not, yeah.
But if, if everybody wants to take a moment and be real quiet, there's been a humming in this room the entire night.
From the fluorescents, yeah.
Is that impacting your health, safety, or welfare?
I would imagine it'd drive me crazy if I had to do it 24/7.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I get that.
It's like being underneath the power line.
However, what we have here is the illusion of authority. So the state has set a guideline of 10. Nexon is saying they can work within eight, which means they're not going to appeal us again. They're not going to come back, bring it back, incur additional legal costs for this town. I understand it's not what we want, but we only have the illusion of authority here. So I am in favor of doing whatever ends this as quickly as possible and prevents either party from being able to come back and sew us.
I would say that the likely scenario is that if we do not put eight as the number, then Nexon may appeal and say, we play it nice, we want the state standing now.
And then the state's going to say it's ten?
That would be...
So, I don't like it, but we have no real authority here.
Sure.
So they are willing to cultivate and come down.
I think it's been said, we can control, the judge said to back that we can control the number we set at. And just because they say it's not, they don't know if they can mitigate that down yet or not, what steps have been taken besides the site plan.
But the onus is on them.
Yeah, the onus is on them.
So if they say...
So I don't want to just like tell people, hey, sorry, this is there out of convenience for everybody except for you. We're going to say eight is acceptable, that the number that they gave us. I think the initial decision that the board said was zero. So I think there's compromise in there, but I don't think it just automatically say, oh, well, just for the convenience, we're going to say it's eight because that's what they're willing to do.
I'm not saying it's an inconvenience. I'm saying, what is the most likely outcome?
Somewhere in the middle.
I, I don't. I think there are...
I can think differently as well.
The state's going to come in and say, you had a chance at it, we gave you an opportunity to make a reasonable decision, and now you will live with 10. And they're not going to remand it back to us, they're just going to order it. And that's just going to cost more in legal fees. It's going to prolong this even further. Like I said, it's the illusion of authority. We have no real authority here. The state has pretty much determined in almost every instance, they are going to find in favor of the solar applicant because the state wants solar. I don't like it, I don't agree with it, but I think we have to be realistic and logical in how we process this, regardless of whether we like it. We kind of have to take away what our feelings are here.
Ultimately, what, the number that we set will be something that the board votes on.
Yes.
So...
All right, I think if we can...
I have another question.
I think, I think if we go with eight, like you said, like legal or a setting, like, you know, we, chances are the state's going to be like, you know, we, we gave you the chance, we're not going to do it anymore. But if we set a precedent for eight now, and we can basically apply that to projects down the line too. So, and going from a, you know...
Projects down the line would be governed under the zoning bylaws now, where this project would be under a special permit process. This project came in under a site plan approval process, so there was no discretionary approval. It was site plan approval with conditions.
Okay.
So any future projects would have a different standard they would need to meet before they reach a decision. We would be able to say no for discretionary reasons. In this case, we were not. If anyone would like the history of how we got there, I'm happy to go through that at a later date.
I did have another question. It said that it would be unreasonable to be able to go under eight decibels. Does that mean that the system's generally going to be running at eight decibels at the property line? Like it...
That is the...
Nobody should expect it to be less than that at the property line at any moment, right?
That is the, compared to ambient levels. So if the ambient level is five, then the maximum is 13. I'm making up numbers. Your demonstration has been made. Thank you. So that would be my, my understanding of the change. All of those numbers would be at the property line. The sound levels would vary based on what was happening with the equipment at the time. The past testimony is that the inverters are the loudest component, and that is what takes, takes the energy in the batteries and puts it on, into the grid. So it changes it from DC to AC. And that is a component which would run past sunset in some cases. So the idea is that the system is designed to meet its peak output at, at midday on June 20th or whatever it is. So it's, or whatever, so it's, and it has a, feeds into a pipe, I think of a two megawatts. So it's generating two megawatts, it's not drawing on the batteries, it's just feeding the batteries. And then once it starts feeding less than the maximum it can fit through the pipe, it'll draw from the batteries to feed two megawatts as long as it can, and then it'll shut down. So it would go... It would vary based on how sunny a day it was, what time of the year it was, things like that. I believe that the past testimony that we had gotten, the original decision was that in summer, it might run until 10:30 at night. That's a ballpark.
Mr. Chairman, may I clarify? It can only run provided it complies with the decibel levels established by this board at the property line.
Yes.
So the, if in fact, as ambient levels, levels drop over the course of an evening, that then means that the total sound generated as a result of the project can only be eight DBA over that existing ambient level. So if it's running in an instance where it's more than eight DBA, given the existing ambient level at the time, it's in violation of whatever condition this board is, is permitted.
Yes.
I also want to clarify what Board Member Arts mentioned. We did not establish eight DBA based on the site plan alone. We've retained Excentec, which is an acoustical expert. We've had them perform modeling on multiple occasions. We've had them provide reports for this board at the board's request on multiple occasions. So this is not Nexon say-so based solely on the location of the project and the equipment. It's based on what the design of the project is as it's been approved by this board and then modeled by Excentec to demonstrate what is feasible with additional mitigation that they've proposed that Nexon would be paying for as well.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments on this point at this time? Ms. Andrews said, I thank you for waiting on the, on the meeting at this point. Did you have an additional question for the board?
Yes, Chairperson Griffin, 23 and a half minutes ago approximately, you mentioned again, or I mean, maybe for the first time or maybe the second, the health and safety and welfare of Norman residents, I'm assuming you were referring to. And you were talking specifically about testing within 30 days as soon as safety permits. And you kept referring to they, they will test it, they will, they will, they. And I, would you please clarify to whom you were referring as they, T-H-E-Y? Because are you talking about Nexon or any of Nexon's, you know, companies that they may hire?
Sure.
Is that who you're referring to? They.
So the condition is written that Nexon has to pay for the cost of testing.
But they will not hire the companies who will do the testing, is that, is that correct?
I do not believe that was specified. I do not believe Nexon owns any testing companies, so I assume that would be something that would be third party. I don't believe the original decision referenced who chooses which testing agencies retained.
Okay, so it would not be the town of Norm who would be contracting with a testing agency as opposed to Nexon contracting with their, their, you know, preferred testing agencies?
The intent...
I wanted to know who they, they are.
Sure. So the intent of the condition was to put the burden of paying for testing, any that is required, on Nexon rather than the residents.
So we could hire our own company to test and then submit it a bill to the town of Norm, who would then submit a bill to Nexon? Is that...
I, I can't speak to the logistics of how that would happen or what would happen. That would be something that we would need to, that would need to be communicated through, probably coordinated by the town. All that we're talking about now is testing that would be required in the event of a fire or release from the battery storage system.
Right, well, we're inhaling those contaminants, but I do, I think it's very important for the health, safety, and public welfare of the residents to be sure that it is not someone who, a, a company that is hired by Nexon. That, that is important, I think, for the residents, especially the butters, to be assured that the planning board is watching out for us.
I understand the conflict of interest that you speak to.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Maybe we could reiterate the process of what happens in the event of a release or a fire in terms of notification, who is notified.
I think all of that is going to be governed by the state's emergency management guidelines and all of those plans that are...
Don't we have a condition that requires notification immediately to the fire department?
Yes, sorry. Yes, there is notification immediately to the fire department and therefore the town for any communication that would be needed, yes. And the fire department also needs to sign off on the emergency response plan that's in place, which would involve warnings and notifications and everything contingent on that. So that's being developed, that would be approved at the local town level, yes. Thank you, Laura.
Sure.
So obviously, we have our town council here, we have the applicant's counsel and engineer here. Are there additional questions that we have for any of these parties that we need to make our decisions as it relates to the specific remand? I'm hearing a lot of silence. So I'll start with Ms. Carter, Ms. Minahan. Is there any additional comments based on what we've discussed this evening that you would like to address at this point related to this remand?
Kega, I'm not sure what your thoughts are and what the board's thoughts are. You know, I have written down a lot of responses to some of the comments that were made, but I don't know that it would be in the best use of the board's time or productive, so I defer to you if it would be helpful for me to go through some of the things that were said or not. But I have nothing new.
If, if you don't have anything new, I think questions or comments that were made, I think I've tried to address. If there's anything that was not addressed that you feel is appropriate to mention or go through, I'm happy to listen to that.
Okay. Just looking through the various comments that were made. I mean, there were certain things, which I'll mention one by way of reference for the types of things I'm talking about, but there was a comment made about waiting until contamination hits someone's property line. Just to clarify, that's not how the testing and release would happen. But no, I mean, I don't think it's worth going through anything in more response.
Thank you, Ms. Minahan.
Thank you.
And to Town Council, Ms. Quessel, is there anything additionally that we've talked, I know we've talked about a, a number of things here in terms of, that you feel we haven't addressed as it relates to these conditions or in terms of process that we should keep in mind as we move forward in this process?
No, I, I think the only thing that I would comment on is that with regard to the testing and who does the testing, whomever does the testing, they are, they, they have to be qualified, they're, most likely they're certified, they possibly even have a stamp, so they are regulated by the commonwealth, whomever it would be.
Thank you. And in terms of rendering a decision as it relates to this remand, just to clarify, there are no specific timelines laid out by the court at this time as to when we need to issue a decision to this, other than the, the general standard of if you take too long, we're going to get really angry with you?
Right, this is a site plan, so I would agree with your statement. You know, if, if the board wanted to continue this to their meeting in, one of their meetings in January, by that point, it might be more beneficial to come back with written comment, written conditions to comment on.
Yes, and in theory, we would be able to have written conditions, review them, fine-tune any language at that session, and then issue a decision.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a clarifying question if that is the process that the board is contemplating? Would that mean that the period of public comment is closed and that the subsequent continued meeting is for the board's deliberation?
That would be my next line of, line of comment to the board.
I apologize.
That's okay. Okay. So to the members of the board, does everybody agree with that approach in that we would look to continue this discussion to one additional subsequent meeting? I can work with Brian on potential wording of conditions based on what we've discussed, and then we can address those in hard copy at that session, A. And B, if we feel it would be appropriate to close the public comment, public hearing portion of this discussion and move forward just as board deliberation.
Excuse me, Tim, could I respond?
Excuse me, Tim, could I respond before you close the hearing?
I will give it up to respond before any motions taken to close the hearing.
Thank you, Laura.
I'm comfortable with that proposal.
Saying head nods?
Yeah.
Okay. And to the secondary point, do people feel that they would want to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
And if so, I would look to address this. So, and if we would move to close the public hearing, all that means is we feel that we have heard all the members of public who want to speak, and we won't take further comments at that time. And before we do that, I would make sure that we, that I made another additional call to people who are here or joining us virtually to make any final comments related to these conditions that they would like to make.
Yeah, I'd like to move the final comments.
Okay. So I know we had at least one person in the room here who wanted to come up, Mr. Coglan, if you wanted to come up and speak, whether it related to the conditions or the discussion to.
Just briefly on, on one of the issues that I heard, please don't consider litigation over what the state thinks. Do what you think is best to protect this town. Because even though I don't want to, I could file another lawsuit if this number is not right. I'm trying to protect the town, I've spent a fortune doing that. And five years of my life, eight percent of my life, has been spent trying to help this situation. I could move to Italy, I'm 62 and I got no kids. But I'm trying to help, please do the right thing. I think you're all good people. Don't worry about the state. The state doesn't care about us, they're pushing solar, as this lady said, she's 100% correct. This is a, it's a political situation. They're imposing this religion on us, it's called solar. Fine, you still have power. You have the power to do what's right for this town, please do it. And, and don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I don't want another lawsuit. I would like to avoid one. But I don't know how else to say it, just do the right thing. Do something you can be proud of. Thank you.
And just to restate, I have seen a couple of comments come up in the Zoom meeting. Comments in the Zoom meeting are not read into the record of the meeting. If you'd like to make a comment, I'm happy to recognize anybody. And again, the motion to close public comp, close the public hearing portion of a meeting does not mean that we're not going to talk about this more. It means that we don't, it means that the board feels that it has heard all of the evidence it needs to and moves into pure deliberations among the members. So that is a motion that the board can take, and the board members can choose to approve, vote yes or vote no. Ms. Anderson, I see you have your virtual hand raised once again. I'm happy to recognize you if you have any comments or questions.
Yes, Alan Anderson again, Nine Fuller Drive. I, I wrote and I, you, thank you for telling me that my, my suggestions in via the chat would not be recognized. So I would like this to be an official part of the minutes written by the town planner, Brian Carmichael, that I would appreciate not shutting down the voices of the residents because I think that whatever you come up with in writing, you should submit to the residents, especially the abutters, so that we can respond. But if you close down public discussion or suggestions or questions to you, then you are not acting in the manner in which I personally was raised, which was that in, in this country, that I have a right to speak and I have a right to act and I have a right to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I would say that, speaking for myself, the motion to close a public hearing does not mean that we haven't, we have not listened to people and that we are not listening to what they have said. It is a procedural decision. And I will say that I resent this suggestion that I'm not listening to the residents on this matter. I have heard hours and hours of public comments on this project going back to 2018. And I'd like to think that I have, I am doing the best that I can as a volunteer board member serving the town. And that's as much as I will say on that, that point, thank you. Does anybody else would like to make any comments at this point, either in the room or on the Zoom meeting? Okay. Again, I will go to the members, if we would like to make any motions to continue and/or close the public hearing. Both option, both options are on the table independently and/or separately. So we can choose to continue and keep public comment open. We can choose to continue and close public comment in separate actions.
We're continuing, what, what date, so we have in January?
Ninth, ninth and 23rd.
Ninth and 23rd, okay.
Ninth and 23rd.
23rd, I'm going in for surgery.
So ninth. Motion to continue to, sorry, SP, I lost it.
Forty-two.
Sorry, what was it?
Four-eight-two.
Four-eight-two.
Remand, technically.
SP forty-two to January 9th.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so again, that is a motion to continue, and that is not a motion to close the public hearing, correct?
Correct, I'd do that separately.
I think if we were going to, if we were going to close the public hearing, we should do that before we continue, because then we can't talk about it after we continue.
Oh, fair enough, okay.
So if you would like that to be a separate action, or if anybody would like to make a separate action, if we have a motion and a second, so if there's any further discussion that people would like to have related to that motion?
I have a separate motion before we do that. I would like to make a motion and close the public hearing.
So you'd like to withdraw your first motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to close the public hearing on this discussion at this time and move forward. So we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public comment on this, on this agenda item. Is there any further discussion from members of the board on that motion? Okay. Hearing no further discussion from the board on the motion, I will go through the roll. Eric, I will start with you.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
Thank you, Wayne, and I will vote yes. So the public hearing is, public comment, public hearing is closed. And Eric, did you want to make an additional motion?
I can make motion to continue SP forty-two to January 9th.
Thank you for the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Laura, for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to January the 9th? Okay, I will go through the roll once again. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
And I will vote yes. So we are continuing to January the 9th on this agenda item, thank you. Is there anything else anybody would like to discuss at open session for tonight's meeting?
Motion adjourned.
Technically.
I'll see Alan for the motion and Eric for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to adjourn at this time? Very good, Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, everybody, good night, everybody. I was at the girls' basketball game, Lynch's lost 58 to 50.
Spoiler alert, Peter.